It is about 7:04, depending on which clock you look at. Hey Charlie? It's time, it's time. Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. It is Monday, June 9th, just after 7 o'clock PM. And we'll start with a call of the roll by the city clerk.
Ms. Barnes. Mr. Bowersox.
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth. Mr. Lewis.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe. Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
And Lynn contacted me a couple of days ago, said she couldn't be here. And Danielle contacted me a few hours ago and said that she had really hoped to make it back in time, that her plane got stuck in Chicago, she's waiting in an airport somewhere, and she probably won't make it if she does, she'll, this will be her first stop if she gets into town, so she may show up later, but may not. We will move on to additions to the agenda, if there are any, any additions? None? Okay. I think we do have one staff report. There was an item that was in your packet this week from Public Works about the Main Street bike lanes. It was just an information item, not an action item tonight, so Gail wanted to briefly let you know about it.
After the meeting, the 27th, Public Works staff went back and discussed Councilman Smythe's question regarding whether we could do the bike lanes on a section of Main Street sooner than later. We looked at various ways that we might be able to accomplish them, and we looked at impediments to those accomplishments. The memo that was prepared, dated June 5th, and prepared by Jennifer and Bill in final form to discuss some of those impediments that we found would be problematic in trying to do bike lanes earlier on Main Street than waiting to do it in conjunction with a grant. We outlined those items in that memo. There were several of them. And basically, it was our recommendation that because of those impediments, we not pursue trying to do temporary striping pending the grant, receiving the grant for construction in 2010. And I just wanted to ask, see if there's any questions from council members based on the memo we presented, and try and respond to them.
Any other questions? Charlie?
No, I just want to thank you for the very carefully done analysis. And, you know, I mostly was wanting to get, take advantage of the pro-bicycling climate that's developing. And in talking to Jennifer, it's real clear that the city is doing other things, and folks should look forward to changes on Philo and to a number of signage issues that will be coming out along with a new city bike route map.
Any other questions for Gail?
Thank you much.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes of the previous meeting. You all got minutes of May 27th?
So moved. Hi, sir.
Okay.
I do, I do, there's not a, I don't see any corrections, but I do want to make clear on here, it says that Ms. Barnes made a motion to call the question. And it was told that there had to be a second when the clerk looked into it. Actually, there did not have to be a second to it, so Roberts' rules of order would have just called the question. So I just want for further reference, if that's ever happens again, that we all are aware of that fact.
So call the question? Is that a question?
No.
Any other corrections, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. The minutes are approved from May 27th. Next, we have public input. I haven't received any cards yet, so this is people's last chance. If you're, if you came to the meeting to speak to us tonight, fill out a card and pass it to the clerk here at your left. It looks like nobody's jumping, so we will move on to item number five, Discussion of Ordinance 2008-03-023. This is an ordinance banning the use of mobile electronic devices while driving in the city of Urbana. And there are two versions. I'll introduce Ron here in a second to tell us about the ordinance he's put together. There are two versions that were just distributed. I know council members received these in email as well. One has bigger type, and we just got it, and one has smaller type, and we got it a few minutes prior. So, Ron, I guess just, yeah, tell us which is the latest, and then walk us through what you've put together, and then we'll have some time for questions.
I have a gremlin in my computer.
Yeah?
When I send out copies, it doesn't always reflect, but sometimes you're seeing, so I don't know why that happened. But the one that just received was the one, the last one I emailed to you, so it is the correct version.
Large type without the little comment on the right, but the sort of final cleaned-up version. So, Ron, did you want to sort of walk us through the ordinance and give us a status update?
I tried to keep this language as simple as possible. I wanted everyone who, because we're going to need to do some education here with regard to this ordinance with the public, I wanted to make the actual language to be fairly clear and unambiguous. So essentially, in keeping with the motion, as I understood it from the previous meeting wherein we discussed this, a max the fine, which right now, per ordinance, our maximum fine is $750. So any individual who, on a public roadway, streets, alleys, or any other, you know, public way, gets in an accident while operating a vehicle and does damage to another's property, or personal injury, or results in another's death, they'll get $750. And I put the language in there, or the maximum fine allowed by city ordinance, just in the event that at some point, we change that, or it gets changed per the law, and we wouldn't have to go back and revisit that. And my understanding, if I understood, the feeling of the council was that we wanted to impose the fairly harsh, the strictest fine that the city had to offer as a deterrent. Alderman Smythe and Alderman Bowersox brought to my attention that, on the previous draft, that I had not put text messaging as a standalone offense. I had covered it really under the devices that are, but I'm now, I'm clear now, I understand that you all want it to actually have its own sort of separate section to be a violation. So again, the language pretty much mimics the paragraph above it. Subsection B basically says, "All usage of text messaging devices is prohibited while operating a vehicle on the city of Urbana's public roadways, streets, alleys, sidewalks, and any other public way." The next session, I go about defining a vehicle. It's a, the language is taken somewhat from the Illinois State Vehicle Code. I modified it a little bit, made it shorter, more succinct, and it's going to actually encompass just about anything that you'd be traveling on in any of our public ways. So that would, and just to clarify, where I'm coming from, I include, that's motorcycles, mopeds, bicycles, skateboards. If you're on a public way, and you're using a mobile communications device, and you cause an accident that causes property damage, or injury, or death, you know, you're in violation. I exempted law enforcement, fire rescue personnel, emergency vehicle operators, public works personnel, and other government personnel, if a mobile communication device is a piece of equipment necessary to their job, and they're using it during the normal course of conducting their job. I exempted those various categories for, I think, self-evident reasons. I think that police and fire personnel, and emergency personnel, and any city worker we're in, you know, a walkie-talkie, or a Nextel-type mobile phone, or a cellphone is a necessity, I think we need to give them the latitude to be able to use those devices while they're, during the course of their work.
Charlie?
Ron, I'd like to compliment you on the simplicity and clarity of this. It is, it is very easy to read, it's very understandable, I appreciate it. And I'd like to move this, to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ron, was there anything else you wanted to present before we enter into questions and discussion?
Yes. Yes, just that the second section, which is, I think, going to be an important part of the section, is going to provide for the study of this issue. What the section two of this ordinance provides is that all UPD officers, when investigating a traffic accident, will, during the normal course of investigating the accident, try to determine if a cellphone was involved as a distraction, and there will be some sort of written notation. You know, I would probably leave it to the police department to determine how they're going to do that, and how they will keep and track that information. And then next year, in the month of July, to revisit this council on this issue, and provide whatever data they were able to collect. And I think that may inform where we will go in the future in terms of this issue.
Any questions? Dennis?
Yeah, thanks, Ron, for your work on this draft proposal. I just had one question, which I think is a little unclear to me, relating to one of the aspects of the text messaging commentary that we had, and that would be on page two, section B. My, as I recall, the intent of the council by straw vote was that we did not want to see text messaging happening while individuals were driving or using a vehicle. My question to you is, the ordinance says that text messaging devices is prohibited, not text messaging. If we, if we're using the word "devices" in that paragraph, doesn't that include cellular phones, or, you know, cellular phones used because you can't, isn't it possible to text a message on a cellular phone?
Yes, and I guess I should, that's a good point, I should have clarified, I'm thinking of devices, there are actually devices out there that you don't talk on. There, I think one is called a sidekick. It's actually just something that you primarily do text messaging on.
Well, that's not what you said.
I understand. I'm just, I'm acknowledging what you said, and I'm saying that that was what my thinking was.
Yeah.
And so, I can definitely amend that, and take out text messaging, and just say, excuse me, take out devices, and just say, "All text messaging."
I would, I would make a motion that that adjustment be made, because I think that was the intent of the council.
Okay, that's it.
So to be specific, that the words "usage of" and "devices" would be removed, and it would be just "all text messaging is prohibited," and read on.
Yes.
Okay, good. Other questions or comments? Heather? Yeah, go ahead.
Is it common to have a fine when a study hasn't even been done yet?
Well, yes, if you're going to prohibit something in a code of ordinances, typically there's going to be some fine, or some sort of sanction. If it isn't a fine, it may be something else, but right now, if you have been in an accident, and you caused it, and it's determined that you caused it because you were using some sort of mobile communications device, you know, the thought I'm thinking is that, we don't need to study that, you're guilty. You were using a text messaging device, and you were, or a phone, or, you know, a laptop, or whatever, you were distracted, you caused an accident. We're, at the same time, going to study this issue to see how many accidents in the city of Urbana may be caused by using these types of devices, so that it may inform whether or not, in a year, we might want to modify this, make it more stringent, or keep it the same, or whatever.
And is, do you believe two weeks is enough time to educate people that you use a cellphone and you're, and you cause an accident, you're going to be charged $750 in the city of Urbana?
Yes.
Because we're going, you do believe two weeks is enough time to educate people?
Yes, and only because this issue has been before the council for quite some time now. It's been well-publicized, it's been discussed. You know, I've had discussions with other attorneys from other jurisdictions about this issue. I mean, people seem to be, and this is just my humble opinion, people seem to be well-apprised of the fact that this type of thing is on the table for this council to consider. So that's just my opinion, yes, that two weeks is enough to let people know. I mean, many other ordinances that have sanctions for noncompliance are effective immediately.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Ron, I, oh, Mayor, go ahead.
Doesn't this take effect immediately, once it's passed?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it says the study is going to be done.
Oh, this, oh, I see what you mean. You're asking about the study. I thought you were asking about implementing the ordinance.
It says they'll, I know, but it says they'll start tracking it, which means they'll start asking on July 1st. Say, July 1st, if I get an accident. But if I get an accident on June 31st, on June 31st of the year, pardon. Then, I'm not, I mean, that's my, that's why I said. I was just going by the date.
It is, the study of-
You would get the fine, but you wouldn't be included in the study.
Right. Are you saying in two weeks? In two weeks, that is when the police will start to keep track of these statistics. And that, that time, I felt was sufficient for them to kind of decide administratively how they wanted to handle doing that, and for the chief and his command staff to be able to give directives to patrol officers.
Any other questions? Ron, I had a really small one, or two, about buses, and taxis, and tow trucks.
That was a tough one, I'll be honest with you, Alderman. I, I'm open to whatever the will of the council is. I left them out as exemptions, not because of any strongly-held belief, but I was just trying, you know, to narrowly tailor the ordinance, and I figured that subject would come up during the discussion of this ordinance. And from a legal aspect, I have no opinion one way or the other. You know, I think it's up to this body to determine whether or not those types of businesses are going to be exempted or subject to.
Okay. And do you think the MTD buses would be included under other government personnel? I mean, they are a taxing body, a unit of local government.
There's, I guess they're district, yes.
MTD drivers are not allowed to use cellphones.
Do they?
I wonder, I don't know if they use any other sort of communication device. To be honest with you, Alderman, I'd have to look, I'd have to look at that. My first, at first blush, I would say, yes, they're a special district, they're a transportation district, and by the laws of the state of Illinois, that makes them a municipality.
Yeah.
District is a municipality.
Yeah.
So, maybe, yes.
Okay.
Maybe.
Well, that's just something we'll sort of keep in mind in the next week, as we refine language. Speaking just for myself, I think it makes sense to exclude them. They've really made the case to us, at least I think, that they use these things routinely as part of their job, they're trained on how to be safe while communicating with the dispatchers, and I wouldn't want to-
They're professional drivers.
Yeah, they're professional drivers. I wouldn't want this to change their practices, they already have a whole regime of safety practices, so. Any other questions or comments? Charlie?
Yeah, just so I understand, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is encourage people to pull over-
Yes.
And, and put the car in park, or whatever.
Yes.
So does, while operating a vehicle, is that sufficient that, you know, if you're pulled over to the side of the road, and you've put it in park, or you've stopped your car, that you're no longer operating the vehicle?
Well, I'm trying to envision a scenario where you've pulled over your car, and you, you know, it's turned on, but it's in park position, or at least stopped, and you cause an accident because you're using your cellphone. So my thought is, operating a vehicle and causing an accident inherently, that means that you're probably moving, or about to move, or, you know, entering into traffic. At least, now that's my first thought, and I don't know if you could think of another scenario that, that maybe I'm not considering.
This is a very nice, simple, straightforward, and, you know, I mean, I like it for its simplicity and clarity, so I don't really want to complicate it, but, you know-
I considered using the word "driving," but I didn't want any dispute. You don't drive a bicycle, most people don't use that terminology, and so I didn't want somebody to say, "Well, yes, I was talking on my phone, and I was on the bike, and I darted out into traffic, I caused this accident, but I wasn't driving." You know, you don't drive, and I didn't want them to say, implicit in the word "driving" means you're using a motor vehicle, as opposed to just vehicles. Or a moped, for that matter, a motorcycle, you don't really drive a moped, you know, use a moped. I don't know what you do with a moped. Operate, right? So that was my thinking, in using that language.
Okay, ready to vote? First on the, is this Robert's amendment to strike the words "use a job," "device?" All of you favor that? Please aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that amendment passes, and now we're back to the main motion, the final amendment discussion. Okay, all those favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see that next week at City Council with approval. Item six is an ordinance number 2008-06-053, amending chapter three of the alcohol laws of the county of Urbana, and the city of Urbana, regarding ordinances regarding restaurant classifications.
Ron, I know this item was from legal, if you can-
Well, actually, the mayor probably could give a better-
Okay.
A better explanation of that.
Yep.
I was the drafter, but this was at the mayor's request.
This is along the line of previous action to reduce the liquor license fee for restaurants compared with bars, because relatively smaller proportion of their business is based on alcohol. And then we had to define what a restaurant is, and that's what this does.
I can add that it's, it's kind of tough coming up with a definition of a restaurant, you know? If you, if you're a bar, and you put out a bowl of pretzels, you know, you technically serving food, is it, no, that really doesn't feel right. But there are some businesses that kind of fall in between, and I did some research on, came up with some model language, and what you see before you in terms of getting into what is really a restaurant, that's what you see before you. So I can't take credit of coming up with that myself, as much as I'd like to, but I think it captures pretty much what we all consider a restaurant to be.
Questions? Charlie?
No, I'm ready. I'm moved to send it to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, seconded by Robert Lewis. Any other questions or discussion? I had one question, and I don't know, Ron, or the mayor, whoever of you would like to answer it, about, about whether we already have the costs for this in the schedule of fees. Well, yeah, I'll answer, I'll ask that one first. Do we know, is the R, is the R class already listed somewhere, in terms of what our fees are going to be?
Yes.
Yes, that's what, that's what Mr. Eldridge brought.
With the fees, we pass first, okay. And my second question, this is probably a Ron question, is, there is this 40% cutoff, that 40% of your business can't exceed alcoholic liquor, to still be a restaurant, is, do we already have a way of calculating, is that monthly, or quarterly, when people pay their sales tax, or over an annual basis? Just so, when someone disputes it, we've already been down that road before?
Food and beverage tax.
Okay.
I actually made an inquiry, and, Ron, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think down in finance, when they're collecting food and beverage taxes, it ought to be able to tell the city how much is being spent on alcohol.
Okay.
Yeah, portion, what portion? We can do the math.
Okay, proportional. Good, thank you. Charlie?
That leads to a follow-up question, which is, have we already run the numbers, so we know which ones, which places qualify as restaurants?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion by Charlie to send this to council with recommendation for approval. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll see that next week as well. We have item number seven on the agenda, which is an ordinance amending section 2661 of the Code of Ordinances regarding limousines, and it's my understanding, I think that we'll wait on this.
We're going to, we're going to pull that, that one, and I'd ask that it be put over to the next committee, please.
Okay. Great, I think we can just automatically place it on the agenda again in two weeks, without any action here. Great, then we come to number eight, which is an item from Public Works. This is Resolution 2008-06-015R, a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. This is regarding the 2008 motor fuel tax resurfacing work. And again, Gail, take it away.
This is the work that we're proposing to do this summer. We have the plans in at IDOT now, under review, anticipate bidding, it's like first or second week in July. It does include the Philo road improvements, with the road diet and the bike lanes on the resurfacing, so it is in there. The remainder of the projects are listed. We recommend approval of the resolution in an amount of $815,000.
Moved?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any questions? Okay, Dennis?
Does this have to go to council, or can it be done here tonight? This has to go to council?
I think we will go to council.
I ask for council.
Okay. Dennis, you got a question? Go ahead.
The Lyerman Avenue milling, the resurfacing, and that's from Washington Street to Hunter, so that's not part of the, part of the street that the authority had milled, is that correct?
This is south of Washington Street, that oil and chip section, it runs down there for a couple, three blocks.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see that next week as well. Next, we have two items that we can take together, they're both from Public Works. I'll read them both. The first is ordinance 2008-06-044, an ordinance renaming a remnant of Frontage Road in the southeast quadrant of Lincoln Avenue and I-74 to Kenyon Road. And the second is ordinance 2008-06-045, an ordinance renaming River Rock Drive to River Rock Drive. And the first is in one word, and the second is to make it two words, River Rock. So, Gail, did you have anything to present about this, before we ask some questions?
I'll answer questions, I've read the memo. I think Charlie's anxious.
Charlie, go ahead, Charlie.
The titles say it all. I moved to send these to council with recommendation for approval.
I second that.
Okay, seconded by Dennis, was the first one I heard. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Again, we'll see those at council in one week. That was items number nine and 10. So we're on to a finance item, Resolution 2008-06-013R, the resolution ascertaining prevailing wages for 2008, 2009. And city comptroller Ron Eldridge will tell us about this resolution.
I don't know if I've got anything to add to this, same one that the township passed last Monday, and the same one, you know, we've done every year.
Moved to send it to council.
Okay. A motion and a second?
With recommendation for approval.
Any questions? Yeah, with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same time? None? Okay, thank you again, we'll see that next week at City Council. Another finance item is Resolution 2008-06-014R. This is a resolution amending a post-employment health savings plan for certain employees of the city of Urbana. And Ron, tell us about this item.
I'll go ahead and talk about both the resolution and the ordinance that's right behind it, because they're really attached together. The city has a, part of the benefits package of our city is what we call a post-employment health savings plan, in which the city makes certain deposits into an employee's accounts, and once they leave employment with the city, they can use that for eligible medical care cost reimbursement. That's a very good, very good plan, very popular with employees. It saves the taxes on it, and helps them save for their future retirement costs, et cetera. And one of the real nice features about it, that employees used to be able to do, is when they left employment, they would have a cash payment coming for their accrued sick leave under our plan, and they could elect a portion of that, was up to them. They could elect to put a portion of that into that plan, and save the taxes on. Well, IRS did away with that January 1st, said, "No more elective features are allowed in these plans at all." You can put whatever you want, but whatever it is, everyone will do it, or no one will do it. So that, so employees were contacting me, saying, "We really need to try to do something, and we really would like to put more money in the plan." So I worked with all employees in the plan, and generally, almost all of them wanted to do that, but they- But there were a few that said, "Well, you know, I don't know. I like the cash. I wanted the cash. I realize that I have to pay the taxes, but I'm planning to buy a boat or whatever with it, you know, when I retire." But after I worked with all the ones that had concerns about it, showed them their savings, explained what it could be used for, at least everyone was accepting of this change, which is a small one. I wouldn't say they were all in favor, but they all were willing to accept it for the good of the whole. And really, what it is, is just taking 10% less in cash and putting 10% more in their account. So it's a cost neutral to the city. There's no cost to the state whatsoever. The reason I had to do it in two separate documents here, the resolution actually amends the plan that's placed on file with the IRS. But then I had to go through and, with the ordinance, amend our sick leave policy that reduces the payment. So there will really be two schedules. You'll see there's two schedules in there for cash payment. Those that are not in the plan are as it is now, and those that are in the plan will be getting the 10% less.
Okay, that ordinance number, I'd forgotten to read it before, is 2008-06-052. Do people have questions or a motion? Heather?
I move this... Can I move them together?
Yeah.
With recommendation for approval, and I'd just like to say thank you for talking with the employees and helping them understand what their benefits would be by having this. That's something that a lot of, I think, employers don't do with their employees, and it's nice that you did that legwork to get a sense of what the employees were thinking around here, so that's great.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Ron on this, on these two items? Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we will see those as well at City Council next week. That takes us to item 14, which is social service funding allocations. And Danielle has just arrived from being stuck at the airport in Chicago. Welcome, good evening.
Weather in Chicago is very nice right now. Not sure what... We were delayed for many hours, but...
So, we had talked before by phone when you were stuck in the airport, and you'd said you didn't have these things ready to print out and bring, and we all look at it and pass it tonight, and that we can do it next week. Do you want to stick with that, or is there something you'd like to... About the social service, talk us through this evening. And I know Kelly isn't here, because we told her.
Yeah, so just a brief update. Folks had given some feedback on the motion that I put forward, and I left all of your feedback at home and have been at a conference, which went from 8:00 in the morning until about 3:00 in the morning for four days. So I don't have a motion for you regarding social services this evening. But... So what I'd like to do is, and I do have some budget issues, so I'd like to see the budget go to the next committee of the whole, and we can also address the social service allocations at that time. But I can get them to you in the next seven days so that you have some time to look at it.
And, yeah, Mayor? Could we, in order to keep the budget moving ahead then, would you prefer if we send it to council and take up questions, budget questions, at a council meeting? And then there'd always still be a chance to defer it? Okay. If it went to council the 16th, they could...
Okay, I can get a revised motion in this week's packet.
Okay. So any other social service funding input that people want to give at this point? I know, yeah. Okay. Anybody want to second that?
I second that.
Okay, seconded by Dennis. Any other comments about social service funding? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we'll take that up at council, and I think Kelly will be here next Monday as well. That leaves budget markup number 15, and I know Danielle, you were the one person who'd contacted me and said you did have some suggestions you wanted to make about the budget. Is there anybody else who is prepared to talk about budget changes at this point? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to send the budget to council? And, you know, of course, we can still discuss any changes next week.
I'll make that motion. I'll move that we send the budget to City Council.
Okay.
Next week.
Is there a second? Okay. So any discussion, questions, input? Danielle?
Yes, the part of the budget that I'll be referring to is page 125. It's the Public Arts Fund financial summary. And so for those of you who have your budget up, I do have, basically, part of what has happened is that the budget was released before we passed the public arts plan. So some of what I'm going to propose has to do with bringing the budget in line with that public arts plan. In addition, the concern that I have about the public arts fund is that it isn't in line with the goals of the council or of the task force at this point, though I don't think it would take a lot to move it into line with those goals. So I guess I have a series of motions. They're short, and I could put those motions forward at this point, and we can take... So they're basically amendments to the budget referring to the public arts fund. So let me just do that, and we can take them piece by piece. The first is, so basically, there's revenues and expenses. So under revenues, the motion is to add $8,000 from the UP-TV, which is the Urbana Public Television Fund, put that under expenditures, and add $8,000 to the public arts project line in expenditures. Excuse me, add $8,000 from the UP-TV fund under revenues... I meant to say revenues, and add the $8,000 to the public arts project line in expenditures. That's my motion.
Do you want to do more explanation?
Just a quick explanation. We talked about this with the public arts plan. The UP-TV fund has funds in it that are available, and we can use them for programming. We talked about producing counter-programming to respond to some of the programming that people have called hate speech. And so one of the thoughts is that we would produce, that we would commission programming in response to that, and the council unanimously supported that in the public arts plan that we passed a few weeks ago.
Mayor? Yeah, and then Mayor, and then Dennis.
Okay, I... My understanding of the plan that you said that the council passed was that it was to be looked at by the Public Arts Commission as just a suggestion. I don't think that this council passed a plan. I think what you wanted to see was to have whatever the task force recommended actually be adopted, and we took it as recommendations that the Public Arts Council could look at.
Okay, Dennis, and then Heather.
We have to fund what we send.
I have similar concerns. I think that the recommendation to remove $8,000 from UP-TV so that the arts council or artists can create the hate speech vocabulary or programming, anti-hate speech vocabulary programming, removes it from the people who are probably the most able to create video footage and do the studio work to make effective PSAs. And I think that the UP-TV staff was actually expecting to do some creative programming to fulfill the wishes of the council. So I think removing it from the UP-TV staff, which has recently been hired and has a very creative vision for their programming and for the involvement of the community, and put it into a... And place it into the hands of the arts fund is misdirection, and I don't support it.
Heather, you had comments too?
Well, I would echo what the mayor said. I did believe when we passed what we passed, I think it was three weeks ago, was just a recommendation to the task force. I... That's all that I thought we passed. I was under the same understanding as the mayor.
Any other... Yeah, Danielle?
Just to make it clear, it's, yes, we said this is basically a program that we put forward. You're welcome to alter it. It doesn't make sense that we would put that program forward and not then adjust the budget to reflect the program that we're proposing. So... And we also, as a council, have already said that we are going to support counter-programming, so that was a motion that was passed. The staff, I don't have the understanding that the UP-TV staff regularly produce in-depth content. In the past, and when I first got up in the UP-TV commission, staff members were producing some content, and it was a problem because those staff members were not available to the public to support them in doing public access. So we actually urged staff members to stop producing in-depth, long pieces of content. PSAs are one thing, but in terms of actual content, historical documentation, et cetera, we have, as a UP-TV commission and as a station, moved away from staff doing that because there's simply not staff time to involve themselves in that. Also, I think that this is not really a city conversation. It's a community conversation, we're a conduit for it regarding the hate speech issue, and therefore, the reason that we would commission works from the community is to acknowledge that we're inviting and supporting the community in doing that. And we heard from members of the public that there was not... That it was not easy to come by programming, and that's been somewhat confirmed by the work that I've done. And so that's why, you know, as a commitment to our prior conversation about hate speech, as a commitment to our staff without dumping large quantities of work on them, which I think would take away from public access, I think, and commitment with the plan that we proposed to the commission, we should go ahead and budget it. Now, if the commission changes it, we'll change the plan, and we'll also change the budget at the same time. So it makes sense for the budget to reflect the decisions that the council have made to date. And therefore, I ask you to support this motion.
Any questions? Charlie?
I think it'd probably be appropriate to include in the budget a note to the effect that... To exactly what Danielle has just alluded to, that we're putting this money in as a placeholder based on the actions that we've taken, and that future amendments adjusting these numbers may be in order. I mean, I support the concept of putting our money where our mouth is, really. And I think that's what this is doing. But at the same time, we do put notes in the budget about what, about how we're going forward.
Okay, Mayor?
The human relations officer has been working on getting programming. So I think you're kind of undercutting what we're doing now to answer some of the hate speech.
Dennis?
Well, the staff recently of UP-TV, our public access channel, does do in-depth programming and materials. And one of the successful projects they just completed was the multi-segment tour of historic homes that are in the historic areas of Urbana, which were published, and I think these were like half an hour programs, featuring a walkthrough of the different homes, like the Richter House, and the Lindsay Bed and Breakfast, and many others, which is very successfully done. I would hate to take a significant amount of money from their budget and turn it over to a different organization that has yet to have its first meeting. I think that we do, we have indicated that we do support the arts, and we are interested in seeing what programs and suggestions they bring forward to us. And I'm sure that all worthy projects that they bring to us will be reviewed carefully and funded appropriately. Again, I'm just not willing to take money from UP-TV, which is an embattened public resource at this time already, and further weaken their stand.
Okay, anybody else with comments? Would all those... This is the amendment to add $8,000 to the revenue here in the Public Arts Fund from UP-TV, and to add $8,000 of expenses for this particular counter-hate speech project. Would all those in favor, please, actually, maybe do a show of hands so it's really clear what the number is? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, so we had three to three. Clerk, remind me, does three to three pass with simple, unsimple motions like this? No, it fails. Okay, so the motion fails. Any other motions? Danielle, go ahead.
So I guess I'll just jump into... There's a bunch of smaller issues, but I want to actually jump into the main concern behind this, which is... My motion is to change... Let me just put the motion out there, and then we'll discuss. To change the TIF funds transfer from $60,170 to $104,170.
Could it be said again?
Yes.
The TIF funds transfer from $60,170 to $104,170.
Okay, so that's the TIF, the transfer of TIF funds line in the public arts fund, the money that comes from the TIF and goes into public arts each year.
Yes, and I'd like the opportunity to explain if someone would second my motion.
Okay. Danielle, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah. So, okay, so basically, if you look at the current budget, we have, just in revenues, we have $50,000 coming in from private donations and arts events, and we have $50,000 going out in public arts projects. What that means is that the city's commitment to funding the arts in the current budget for public arts programming for projects is zero city dollars. So I just want to be clear to this council that if you support the budget as it's currently written, the public arts programming budget, the projects budget, is exactly zero dollars. What the funds, from city funds, and expectation is that private donations and arts revenue for events that have not been scheduled would make up the $50,000 for the public arts projects. So it's my understanding from this council's statements of its goals, back when we first created those goals, one of the goals was that we would have a dedicated revenue stream for the arts that was stable. That was part of the initial goals. That was the goals that you gave to your task force that then talked about what was going to happen next. And so, but the difficulty here, I think the numbers are not that far off, but the difficulty here is that 100% of the dollars that we're looking at spending in this budget, in the original budget, are for economic development, which I actually don't think belongs in this, in the fund, and for administration. And so, you know, pick up any public arts documentation, any research, any shred of scholarship. The statement has always been said that weak public arts programs spend all their money on administration and none of their money on the arts. So the current, this, basically, the proposal that I'm making does a couple of things. First, it goes with the staff's recommendation to us initially, and to the task force initially, of funding the arts at $3 per capita, which essentially broke down into $1 for the administration and $2 for public arts programming. The staff has said that the TIF fund can support this. That's where they got that initial dollar amount. So it does that. It funds it at $2 per capita, which is not necessarily progressive, but it's in line with what public arts programs are doing. The second is, it's a funding allocation that's in line with your council goals, and it's a sustainable funding arts stream. The third reason is that although I support, I certainly support the idea of having some outside revenue, and I've called Bill in our arts council, and I've said I would do footwork to help to make that happen, I'm a seasoned fundraiser. I fundraise for Patch Adams. I fundraise for the Urbana IMC. I write proposals for my business, and I can tell you that we cannot bring in grants in the first year. You develop relationships over time. You develop relationships over time. Anyone who's ever done grants knows that that's the case. So, for us to actually say, okay, $50,000 is going to magically come in from private fundraising and arts revenue, and arts events, and that's what's going to go to fund programming, is basically setting this up for failure in its first year. In addition, if you take out the private donation and arts revenue, it actually is a significant decrease. The current budget is a significant decrease in funding the arts from last year. So, here we are in our first year of a public arts program. This is going to be a progressive program, we're a progressive city, and we're actually saying that we're going to hamstring our public arts program in its first year by insisting that all art come from private entities. Every shred of art would come from private fundraising, and we don't even have a mechanism for that fundraising. And I think it's unfair to expect the Commission to play such a significant role in fundraising in its first year when it's just getting its legs. So, I think that it's, you know, we said that we wanted 50, $40,000 of sculpture on Filo Road. Well, where is that money going to come from? We've said that we want to have arts proliferate through downtown, but there's absolutely no funding for it in this current budget. So, it's, I think it's important for us to go with staff's initial recommendation in terms of funding for the arts, for us to fund it from TIF funds and local UPTV funds, which, you know, is a possibility with, in the future with the arts. And I will tell you that if you pass that initial budget with zero funding for the arts, the story on the street is going to be that the city council in Urbana did not fund public arts in its first year of having a program. It had zero allocation for arts programming in its first year. And you can respond to your constituents when they ask you, how is it that we've had materials in the paper for years that we were going to establish a public arts program? And you say you are establishing a program, and yet you don't fund it? And how are you going to respond to people about that issue? So, I think that the funds, the TIF funds transfer is the best way to do this at this point, the TIF can handle it, and I urge your support.
Any questions? Other discussion? Would all those, the motion was made and seconded to change the transfer TIF fund amount from $60,170 to $104,170. Again, I want to do a show of hands, just so it's clear whether the motion passes or fails. Would all those in favor, please signify with a show of hands? Okay, four. Would all those opposed signify with a show of hands? Okay, the motion, that amendment passes. Are there any other budget items this evening? Danielle, go ahead.
Thank you. There's just two additional items I think that we should address. The first is, actually, there's two, and then it's a question that I'll just bring back for next week because it's a question to staff. So, the first is, under expenditures in public arts, we have zero for supplies and printing, and yet, this is the first year of the public arts program, and that means that the Public Arts Commission and the staff will have no money to actually publicize that we have a public arts program. And it also means that if we want to set up a gallery in City Hall as per what we've discussed in the plan, they don't have money for like hooks and just really basic kind of small ticket items. So, I would like to add $1,500 for supplies and printing to expenditures so that there's room for supplies.
Okay, that, we had, nope, that was a motion, I don't know that anybody seconded it yet. Okay. Charlie, you had a question about it then?
So, you set up a revenue stream here from the TIF, so these are expenditures against that?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. That makes sense.
Uh huh.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor? Discussion, yeah, go ahead.
I'm astounded that with a budget of $151,000, that somebody would say we have budgeted zero for the arts, and that that's going to be the word on the street. If that's the word on the street, I think people are being misinformed. And I think it's a mistake to say that the TIF money is just there that can just be added and added to the arts. What you're doing is you're running this budget to over $200,000, you're making it be more than $5 a person, and your original goal was $3 a person. And you can argue that spending on administration is not spending on art, but if you're spending to try to get art into the city, I think that you have to look at the results. And I don't believe that we have to go out and buy everything and have it all be bought in the first year. I think what we're trying to do is set up programs, and we have a balanced budget, and I really think it's a shame to come in at the last minute without any, I didn't get any notice of these things, I haven't had a chance to research what you've, what you've said here, but I certainly think it's misleading to tell people that what we set up was zero. I think it's very misleading to say we have no scheduled events, because we do have scheduled events, and I've tried to come up with the money, and I just think you're not telling people what's really been going on in this budget. So, I'm very disappointed to see this kind of talk coming out of this council.
Danielle?
I just want to say that what I think is at stake is really simply a philosophical difference, and in discussions with, and the mayor and I've had so many discussions, and we've had so many discussions about this, and I think it's really clear that there's two issues on the table. One, one philosophy is that all arts programming should come from fundraising, and none should come from the city budget. That is one valid understanding of the arts. And in my conversation with the mayor, that seemed to be the position was, and budget reflects that. You can look at public arts funds, and you can look at private donations, and they're exactly the same dollar figure. So, the second philosophical position, which I believe that is the position of this council, is that it's okay for us to fund the arts, that that's what we want to do, and that arts means that we're going to actually fund the arts. So, so this council, getting behind funding actual, the public arts projects, is taking a step. Now, we talk about the five, the mayor mentioned $5 per capita. I don't think until this very moment, when, you know, until looking at the budget, I thought that all of a sudden we're going to take a bunch of economic development projects like the gallery rent subsidies and put them in the arts program. When we talked about the public arts program, we talked about new things happening, not, not preserving the old things only, but, but expanding that and supporting the arts with arts grants. That's really all, the whole conversation has been about. So, you know, last year, we funded it at a per capita allocation that was above $5 per capita, if you want to include all the ED stuff. I'm going to make a motion next to actually pull out the economic development things because I don't think they belong here, and I think that that's, they belong back in the Economic Development Fund where they were, and they fluctuate, and they can put things at risk. So, I think that, you know, we're talking about the expenditures now, and basically, so you know, the expenditures I'll be putting forward are just twofold. Some supplies, and making sure that we can fund public arts projects. And now that we have the TIF funds to do that from your last vote, we can move forward with, with this. But that's, that's what's on the table, I don't think there's any more discussion. I think the discussion is, do you think we should privately fundraise for all of our arts programming money? If you do, then you wouldn't support this, or do you think that we should actually fund the arts from city funds? Like every single other public arts program in the entire nation, no public arts program funds just staff. That's ludicrous, in my opinion. They fund the arts, which means they fund, they have a granting program.
Is there any other discussion specifically to the amendment, which is to add $1,500 of expenses under supplies and printing? Okay. Would all those in favor, I'm going to ask for a show of hands again, would all those in favor, please signify your hand in support of the motion? Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries, the supplies and printing motion. Is there any other, is there any other budget action this evening? Danielle?
Okay. So, just, this is the other hand of the expenditures that we just voted, which is that the public arts projects would increase to reflect the difference between the TIF tran, you know, the TIF amount of $104,170 minus the, the $1,500. So, basically, we just did an increase of 14,000, of $44,170. And so, the, with an expenditure of $1,500, that basically leaves us with a certain amount. So, the, so my motion is that the public arts projects line item be changed to reflect the addition to the TIF fund that we just created. So, it's the $44,170 minus $1,500 would be added to the public arts projects.
So, I think, just to clarify the motion, I think that would be adding $42,500, which is the remaining balance, to the public arts projects line item?
Correct.
To change it to a total of $92,500 of public arts projects?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, we haven't had a second yet. Would anybody like to second the motion? I'll second it for the purposes of discussion. There were a couple of hands. Charlie, do you want to speak to this?
What I, what I'm missing here is the complete picture, and I'm trying to follow it, but that on paper, which, which is, is very doable, this isn't very complicated. But I would prefer if Danielle would include her additional points here as part of a single motion.
Okay.
The, you know, removing staff from the other pieces of this, because then I think it makes a more clear picture of where she's trying to go, and it would probably be more easily understood by all of us if we had a better picture.
Okay.
So, maybe you should describe everything first and then make one grand motion, would be my recommendation.
Okay.
So, I would ask that, you know, this motion be withdrawn, a new motion be made.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Second.
That's accepted.
Like to make a new motion.
Go ahead.
And I so much apologize, I mean, my plane was supposed to come in, you know, late morning, and I considered printing this out and coming here, but based on the timing of what I saw, I think I made the right decision. I actually left my bag at Willard Airport and will pick it up afterwards, so I just wanted to get here so we could have this conversation. And certainly, we can also bring smaller points to the council next week. So, for that, I apologize. But basically, the big picture is simple. There's, there's, and you made, the supplies changed already. So, basically, the changes are for us to take out the UBA Arts Festival, because the UBA was used as a conduit for this arts program in the past, and it's no longer needed for that. So, the $5,000 from the UBA that's been going to the UBA would go into the public arts. The difference in the TIF that we just allocated would go in towards the arts. And basically, we would take gallery rent subsidies out of this public arts fund and put it in the ED where it has been in the past. So, that's essentially my motion is, so the gallery rent subsidies are $24,000, and this is simply just to move them, not to remove them, but to move that line item back to where it was in the last budget, which is basically the ED fund, back in the ED. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is to strike UBA Arts Festival, and to add, to add those $5,000 into the public arts project. And then the third is to, it's actually, the, the, the plan is that the public arts fund, the public arts project should be at $76,000, which is $2 per capita. So, essentially, if you remove the gallery rent subsidies, and you remove UBA, and you add, and you make the public arts projects be $2 per capita for programming at $76,000, that's my motion.
Okay. The motion on the table, as I understand it, is to, for the gallery rent subsidy line, to remove that line from this page of the budget, and really to ask staff to reflect that and record that in, back in the ED fund, and to, to remove the $5,000 of expenses for UBA Arts Festival, and instead change that to zero expenses for that item, and to allocate that instead to the public arts projects line.
Uh huh.
Did I state that correctly?
Yeah, and to, to put the public arts projects line item at $76,000.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? None? Charlie, do you have a question? Or you were raising your hand?
I'm still trying to understand it all.
Okay.
Maybe if I can ask Libby, what is the $5,000 to UBA, how is that currently used?
I've got a point of order.
All right.
Is, is this conversation pertinent if we just, if that motion is failed by lack of a second?
I'll just second the motion and then ask Libby the question. How's that?
Okay. Okay. So, we're discussing that motion, and yeah, Libby, there was this question about the $5,000 to the UBA Arts Festival line?
It's, their support of the Boneyard Arts Festival and their work with Forty North. They were to have their contract this evening, but their treasurer wasn't available, so that is in the draft contract, that particular item, and I know it's something that UBA is interested in continuing. We did alert them that there may be a proposed change.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I see three, I saw Danielle first, and then the mayor, and then Charlie here. Danielle?
Just, just to explain the motion, which is that their Urbana Business Association, and I've spoken to them about this, as we, we have been trying to establish a public arts program for a while, and actually, under the former administration, there was not support for it. So, under the new administration, as we ramped up to it, we, well, under the former administration, the best we could do was to have UBA support the arts through hiring artists during the Boneyard Arts Festival. And they did that for, for the last two years. And so, in establishing the public arts program, it doesn't make sense to ask for the UBA to play that role anymore, because that was really, the, the role was created as a substit, like, a substitution for a public arts commission. The UBA is not as transparent as a public arts commission, there aren't, it isn't really a juried situation, it's not really a professional way of going about doing arts. And in fact, the executive director of the UBA has shared with me that it's been difficult at times to, to expend those funds. I mean, the funds were expended, but it was, since it doesn't go to staff time, it's just more work for them to have to figure out how to expend those funds and coordinate with artists. That's, that's what she has told me. I've also told the UBA that in this year, I didn't expect them to be receiving those funds, and I heard from the president of the board that, that it wasn't necessarily an issue. She wanted to make sure if it would have any impact on staff, but it does not. So, basically, it makes sense that now that we have a public arts program, that we wouldn't make use of that anymore. The second, with the move of the gallery rent subsidies, this is really important. It seems like a strange thing, like, why do you just want to move it from one place to the other? Here's why it's important for us to move gallery rent subsidies. Gallery rent subsidies are not controlled in certain ways. We have criteria that if you want to open a gallery in downtown Urbana, and you, and you generate property taxes, we subsidize your rent. So, that item, that expenditure is fluctuating based on who comes to the table. If we put it in the public arts fund, and a bunch of galleries come, and they want to use those funds, it's potentially the case that that money could take away from public arts programming. Also, the public, the gallery incentive program, we haven't been talking about that necessarily as part of the public arts program. We have, it's part of economic development, and it's a, it's an old program that we've had. So, but my main concern is simply that because it's a fluctuating expenditure, it could jeopardize the public arts programming funds if the expenditure has to increase because more groups meet that criteria. So, I don't think it belongs there. In the third case, the public, in the public arts projects, you know, you voted for the TIF fund to be increased, and then the, the other and then the other side of that TIF fund increase is to go to the programming, so that we can actually fund the arts in the first year. Otherwise, we're not going to see arts programs, the programming, the projects, we're not going to see those funded in the first year unless we actually put it in the budget. So $76,000 is $2 per capita for the arts. That's $2 per capita for arts programming. And I think that that's the minimum that we, as a progressive community, should be funding, and that puts us medium to low in comparison with our neighbors for what we do in terms of funding for the arts.
I know I saw the mayor's hand, and then Charlie, and then Dennis. Mayor first.
The reason I established the public arts fund to include everything is because I think it's a logical way to see what we're actually spending on the arts. And I know that Danielle has said that arts are for -- one of the main things that they can do is stimulate economic development. So I don't have any problem showing the public that one of our contributions to the arts is to encourage galleries to locate in the city. I think it makes perfect economic sense, and I think we had a better handle on what we were actually spending if we put everything in the same fund. And I don't think that the gallery subsidies in any way reduce the programs, because the way the budget is set up.
Okay. Charlie, you were next. If you still have comments?
Yeah. I guess I need to sit down with the budget and with Danielle's proposals to see them all together, and to understand whether, you know, it's basically, it's all the same money. And money comes in, money goes out, you know, whether you consider it a dedicated source or not. It's still the -- there's still a collection of revenue to work with and a collection of expenditures based on that revenue. So one of the issues here is, okay, so Boneyard Arts Festival is a popular thing. It's been growing. How do we continue to support it? Do we have a separate little item here that we're mandating the task force support the Boneyard Arts Festival, or what? I mean, you know, when we put $5,000 to UBA, we're saying that the city is essentially supporting the Boneyard Arts Festival to the tune of $5,000 at a minimum here. What guarantees do we have that the task force will continue to support the Boneyard Arts Festival? That's a question for Danielle.
Okay. Dennis, you had your hand up next. Go ahead.
Do you expect an answer for that? Or -- okay, I'll wait.
Okay, yeah. I'd be glad to give the floor to Danielle if you want to speak to Charlie's question of the UBA.
So the $5,000 would go towards mini grants. And those mini grants would be to proliferate the arts throughout the city. And the Public Arts Commission could say, yes, we want those to be clustered around the Boneyard Arts Festival, which is -- which makes a lot of sense. There's only about six weekends, seven weekends in this city where there's really nice weather outside on a weekend, and it's not the summer. So certainly, the Boneyard Arts Festival would be a time where there would be a cluster of mini grants. So essentially, that would be the case. Those funds in the past actually have not just been used for the Boneyard. They've also been used to hold events, like the Silver Creek Luncheon, et cetera, about the arts. I think that, in some ways, that that's one way to use those funds. I think a better use of those funds is for artists, and that was the original intention of the funds. So this would kind of go back to that original intention and make sure that the funding goes directly to the artists.
Okay. Dennis?
All right. First of all, I wouldn't take away or diminish significant funding from the UBA without somebody from the UBA here either supporting it personally or responding to the proposition. And without anybody here from the UBA, I don't even know if they've had -- since I didn't have a chance to know about these suggestions before this meeting, I assume that the UBA representatives who would be concerned about their funding have no clue that this conversation is taking place unless they might be watching on television. So without any kind of interaction with them, which -- and reducing their funding just by fiat here on City Council is not an appropriate way of interacting with one of the most supportive organizations that we support. And it's basically undercutting them without their even having an opportunity to respond to the, what I guess, what I assume is a suggestion that they're not competent to handle arts festival funding in the city of Urbana anymore, because preferably, it should go to a commission which is not yet set up and which -- and whose directorship we have no clue who will be, and whose track record on handling festival funding has yet to be proven. Secondly, I know that the -- in our caucus meeting, we did agree that one of the goals of the City Council is to fund the arts. How we actually choose to do that, the City Council did not particularly have a strong opinion about, although there was one person who had very strong directional opinions about it, and who was making the presentations this afternoon. Already, the City Council, in discussion in the past, has rejected the concept of creating a line item for -- based on a per capita income for the arts funding. And so it's very interesting to see that that very recommendation, which I believe we've actually voted down in the past in the previous sessions twice, has returned again at the last minute. It's true that it's not as large as it used to be, but it is still creating or evaluating the funding as if it were a per capita experience. The city's got plenty of interest in supporting and has shown interest in supporting the arts. And during the last Boneyard Arts Festival, very creatively worked with the UBA, and actually did engage and hire specific artists to participate and perform for the public. And it was a very beautiful and significant event, even though the Boneyard in general was not as well attended as this year as last year. Also, in the past, the Boneyard has -- I mean, the UBA has helped us with almost every aspect of the planning for the city's birthday celebration, which has included the hiring of musicians in March, and hiring musicians and organizing musical talent in February, and, you know, and now, of course, April being the Boneyard Festival. So I think they have a -- one thing you can say about the UBA is that they have a very good organization. And of course, the UBA is made up of all the businesses in our community and represents them. And their board represents all of the businesses in the community, and they have all supported these projects. So I think it's very disingenuous to say that they're not the right people to assist us in certain arts festivals. As a matter of fact, they're actually creating a brand-new festival to bring to the city in the month of June, the Urbana Blues and Brews -- Blue and Brews Festival, that's coming on the 28th. So it really hurts me, I guess, or really, I'm surprised to think that the UBA would be cut out of some of their funding tonight without even them being present to comment on it. And I really, I think that there's just this bad feeling now for me here about -- there's one way to talk about and to encourage and to bring people to work with you on a project concerning the growth of the arts in our community. But sometimes, we're also observing a way where by hook or crook, a certain vision's going to be adopted, no matter how many times the people in the City Council have reservations. And I think it's really great to be tenacious for the arts. I feel like I'm tenacious for the arts and support them. But it's very, very difficult to make snap decisions on the floor of the council without having had anything to read even 10 minutes before the meeting that goes against a lot of the conversation and the voting that the City Council has already taken in the times past. And I think there's a better and a more handsome and a more gentle way to encourage the City Council to increase funding in certain directions, which we're not really appreciating tonight.
Any other comments, discussion? Danielle?
I agree that it would be best for the UBA to be here and could speak to this, because I don't -- there's two versions of reality being offered. And honestly, if the UBA is going to scrap for their $5,000, which I've spoken to both folks, I don't think that's the case. But we can certainly have them here next week and have that conversation. I also think it complicates things. I think it complicates things to have a compound motion. I mean, you see what I'm getting at, but I feel like it complicates these different moving parts. And so I actually want to withdraw my motion with the understanding that we would have UBA come next week, and we could discuss it, to talk about whether or not the gallery rent subsidies line item is -- won't necessarily eat into the public arts programming. If it doesn't, then it can stay here. That's not a problem. So I think that's an additional conversation. So I'd like to withdraw my motion and just put the motion forward. That's the other half of the first motion that I made about the TIF funds. So if I could withdraw my motion.
Yeah, that motion's withdrawn. Danielle, go ahead.
That'll give us time to have this conversation into next week. The motion that would be on the table, just to make it really clear, the motion on the table basically takes the TIF funds. It just -- take out every -- all the other moving parts. The motion on the table would be for the public arts projects line item for budget '08, '09 would be increased to -- this excludes the UBA thing. So it is increased to $87,678.
Okay. Is there a second? Any seconds? Okay.
If I can speak to my motion.
Do you want to speak to that and explain that?
Okay. So basically, what this does is it takes the TIF, which we just established at 104,170. The difference is $44,170. That's what we just added. So it basically takes that difference, and it leaves the UBA funding at $5,000. We can discuss that next week. And so what it basically does is it increases the arts programming to the amount to make up for that TIF, for the $50,000 for the public arts programming, plus $42,670 for what we just added in TIF minus supplies, minus $5,000 for the UBA. So that comes to $87,670. Basically, what if you support this, you'd be supporting, funding the public arts program the other half of the difference that we just did for TIF.
Okay. Any discussion of this item? People ready to take a vote? Again, I'll do a show of hands, just so I can tell where we stand on the vote. Would all those in favor please signify with a show of hands in favor of the motion? Would all those opposed, please raise your hands? Okay. It looked like that vote was two to two, so unless I read that wrong, that motion fails. Any other action here tonight? Budget markup? Hearing none? We are adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next Monday night at 7 o'clock.